My name is Gwen Goodwin and I'm running for city council here in the 5th district. I have lived in Manhattan for about 33 years. Some of you may know some of the projects I've endeavored. I saved PS 109 on 99th Street from demolition in progress. Forced the Board of Education to put the roof back on after they tore it off, landmarked it. I also sent away 400 firemen after 9/11 on a trip called Breath of Fresh Air. I sent them to Cape May, New Jersey for free bed and breakfast. I've been able to get the gas term back on at Lexington House Projects when it was off for two months. I got that done in about five hours. And I've been an activist. I've been at Occupy Wall Street. My husband and I were both members of Black Lives Matter. My husband died last year of a massive heart attack in my arm, but we were both activists and we've been active our entire time here in New York City. This is not my first time out running. Shocking, right? I think maybe some of you already read that in the newspaper. I call that tenacity and we just want to do and serve New York City the best that I can. So I am really happy to have this event tonight. I'm sorry that Ben wasn't able to make it, but I'm glad you all made it because I think it's really important for the neighborhood to know the people that are coming out to represent them. So thank you so much.
Let's move the chairs a little bit so that it's a little bit more. There we go. Yeah, look at that. All right. We're going to leave a chair open for our sitting council member should he be willing to show up. My name is Patrick Bovelin. I'm running for city council here in District 5. I've been an activist and organizer many years. I worked on the Bernie Sanders campaign. I worked with Black Lives Matter in Chicago. I was also a public school teacher there. And I've been an activist and organizer my whole life. And that's one of the things that drove me to run is, you know, I've been organizing in the streets, banging down the walls of City Hall for many years. And I decided we need to bring that activist spirit inside the walls of City Hall, especially now under the Trump administration, especially, you know, in a city where we see rampant affordability issues, where we see, you know, a lot of politicians, you know, being blasted in the news for being in the pocket of real estate, but no one really standing up against that. And so we really need, I think, people who are willing to fight the good fight and to really speak up on behalf of lower and middle income people. Because without people who, like myself, come from a lower income background, without people like us speaking on behalf of lower and middle income issues in city government, will continue to be the last consideration. Will continue to be at the bottom of the list. Will continue to only get the smallest concessions from, you know, when we're compared and put up, you know, in the ring against, you know, big money interests, you know, real estate, financial interests, et cetera. So, you know, I'm here as an activist, I'm here as an organizer, and I'm here to say that I really think that we can do better. And in the words of the Labor candidate in the UK, I think a better world is possible. So thank you for coming.
That's pretty terrific. So you have two really great people challenging an incumbent who I've no idea who he is or what he does. Does anybody have a first question? Yes, please. Okay, would you, actually, the microphone will reach you.
I don't know if it actually pertains to you, but I've been watching the news in Texas. And I live on East Stand Avenue where they keep building and building. And they blame in Texas that there's no more wetlands with water to go. And I remember Sandy about five years ago, four years ago, how bad the FDR flooded and my building flooded, streets were flooded, trees fell down. How do we stand in protecting us against something happening like in Texas?
How long?
A minute and a half.
A minute and a half.
I'm so glad you asked that because I was just talking about that today. My father is a builder and for many years we have watched as the regulations have been lowered for wetlands. And that is the only way to really stabilize the environment. But, you know, we in New York are set to get nine feet. The sea level is about to rise, particularly downtown, by nine feet. And we are not prepared. And by the way, every time I listen to the coverage on TV, there are two words that continue to be missing, and that's global warming. So the thing that I am most concerned about is the energy of the city and how we use the energy of the city and what we're going to be using in the future. And I would like to see us go full blast solar and renewable energy on everything that's not moving. Because this is not something that's not going to happen. It's going to happen. It's a matter of time. And I also think we need to stop building these gigantic skyscrapers on land we know is going to be underground underwater soon. As a matter of fact, I think it's way past time that we start looking at what are we going to do when the water gets here? Are these buildings stable? I don't know if these buildings are even stable or whether they would stand that kind of water.
Hi. So, you know, if we're talking about, you know, historic climate change of, you know, issues and, you know, weather patterns of epic proportions, I would have to say that, you know, what we have to do is make sure that we're not continuing to make mistakes that the city, you know, and we solve the problems that we have now. One of the big issues we have is stormwater runoff. It runs, our sewage mixes with our stormwater in the cases of something like Sandy. And that causes huge problems in our waterways and makes them unlivable. And that causes, you know, increased deterioration and it sort of, you know, causes an exponential problem. And so we need to, we need to address those issues on our waterfront for sure. We also need to make sure when we're talking about the waste transfer station, we need to continue to fight this issue. Because all environmental studies have shown that that will wash, you know, toxic waste basically into our water table and it'll put it in our environments and put it in our communities. And so adding more waste close to our community, closer to our waterway will only make us more vulnerable in the case of another super storm.
Next question.
With regard to that waste transfer station that's going up by the asphalt green, what is the current situation there and how do you both feel you can act in the most effective way to confront the power city?
As far as the waste transfer station goes, we have a community organization which has come up with three different options of things we can do. The current city council member is on the Maritime Subcommittee and yet we see nothing in the way of this continued construction of a really, really poorly planned site. But a local community group has three options for us. And I'll go in the order of which I would push for them. So we have a possible replacement for the 59th Street Marine Police Station. We have a possible fire station. And my favorite is a possible ferry stop. The mayor loves his ferries. This is a great opportunity to have a conversation with the mayor that's positive about this, about this community. Because we know that, I'm sure most of us know that he spends every morning riding all the way out to Park Slope to exercise when he lives about 50 feet from Asphalt Green. If we get him to start caring about the community and we show him, "Look, we want you to put your ferry service instead of 90th Street where it has no direct street access for the MTA access." We create something at 91st Street instead so that people with disabilities, kids and seniors have access to the MTA. And we solve a lot of problems with one simple solution, a ferry stop.
Many people, including, I don't think Patrick was here before this thing was put up. I've lived here for 32 years, so I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. The SPCA was there and it wasn't some high rent district. So that's why it was what it was for such a long time. And then it came back. The plant itself, because it's where it's located, my understanding is, is not as bad as far as pollution is concerned as what we have in East Harlem with seven out of eight busts in Harlem, East Harlem, with no precautions, nothing in front of you to mitigate the pollution. So at least they have done that. However, I came up with a solution for this that I think is very viable and would be very exciting. If you go to Roosevelt Island, they have something called a UVAC system and it's underneath the ground. And what happens is that the waste goes down underneath the ground and gets sucked in to go back and clean it. It goes onto a barge and goes right out. And so I was thinking today, because somebody was asking about the trash trucks. There's supposed to be trash trucks going over on a bridge. It's going to make traffic worse, it's going to make pollution worse. And I thought, at least if we could get on that First Avenue, if we get that into the UVAC system to get rid of some of the traffic there and mitigate a lot of the waste and get it straight out, that that could at least take away part of the problem. So for right now, that's one of the things we can do. But I also want to say that, you know, often it takes a person. It's who's approaching the problem, not what they're saying.
Thank you very much. Okay, next question.
If you get elected, you need to help me maintain Lord as City Hall, which became the Bingo Hall, former ECW. A while back, I sent you an email out about the current city council security director who behaves like a sugar daddy. It's time for him to go, it's called DeAber Jr. I knew he was cop days. He was signed to protect his cousin, Jeffrey Miller, when he was city council speaker. Pissed me off there and now he's the current city council security director. Continue pissing me off and saying he goes with those Keystone Cops. It's time for him to go. So if you could help me get him out of Bingo Hall, I'd be glad, I appreciate it.
Do you have a question?
No, that was just my comment to keep him informed.
Okay. I was going to ask if people, I have this gentleman here and then you, if, yes, thank you very much. If you could please say your names so that we know who you are and all that.
Hi. I'm a resident of Stanley Isaacs. And we have, my name is Walter Houston. We have a myriad of issues that is getting ready to happen. Not only the 92nd Street MTS, which is about to open, construction is about complete. Once it opens, it opens. That's one issue. They're building brand new buildings smack dab in the middle of development. That's another issue. Because of the MTS, there are going to be transformation issues. One of the plans is to close down the 92nd Street entrance to the FDR, just eliminating that entrance there, which will bring traffic all on First Avenue and making it go into the FDR on 96th Street, which is already a nightmare. We have no parks. The park that is designated for the developer, the Stanley Isaacs Park, which is basically a soccer, I mean a hockey little place, is supposed to be redone, but with all of this going on, we don't know how that's going to impact us. Because our playgrounds are going to be taken away because of the new construction. So we have really just that park, which is also going to be under construction. So we will have nothing. On 96th Street, at Second Avenue, they're taking away that park. And building a huge, huge structure that will house 111 units. Three schools, which is good, close to the replacement park, but we don't know the impact that it's going to have on the whole area. These are major issues and issues just in that particular spot. I'm sure throughout the vast area, there are even more. And we want to hear your ideas on how you're going to actually, we're a growing city. We're a cosmopolitan city. We want to be really first and competitive with the rest of the cities in the world. We want progress, but progress sometimes comes at a cost. And we want to know how you want to mitigate that.
What he wants to do, you want to mitigate first?
I'll go first, yeah. I'm ready for it. Well, I'll tackle the 96th and Second Avenue Marx Brothers Playground first. Our current city, sitting city council, yeah, give me a minute in 10 seconds. So this, this park was handed over to private developers at no cost by the entirety of the city council. So if we don't think we need reform, dammit, it's time for some reform. Because we should not be handing over our park space, which we don't get more handed to us on a daily basis, over to private developers. In exchange, yes, supposedly for some schools. But in this case, if we're, if we're working that way, we're putting education and kids' recreation and socializing on a hierarchy of needs. And to me, that is the most damaged way of thinking. I think we need to be, we need to be putting these things on equal footing. We can provide schools by creating community land trusts and using some of the private space that exists already and buying that up. I would say overall, if we're talking about, if we're talking about, you know, density issues in a growing population, we need to be talking about zoning changes. And one of the zoning changes that we can make is to zone for density. Because currently, there are ideas about putting height limits on buildings, which is fine and all well and good. We put 200-foot height limits on buildings. But then what if we create 10, 20-foot high ceilinged luxury floors? We need to be thinking about that. We need floor-to-floor height limits for density.
Hi, hi, hi. Sorry. Hi, okay. Many of you do know me. For years, I've been fighting the up zones. I've been fighting the up zone since 2008 under the Bloomberg administration. I have also been fighting at the same time infill. Because where my old district lies in East Harlem, the South Bronx, this is where the idea of infill was created. And we were able to beat it back, okay? In 2005, when they first came to us with Uptown New York, we were able to beat that back until the next round in 2009. I think probably the biggest problem is city council, is city council itself. We don't have any mindsets down there that can think of any new ways of doing things. But I promise you this as a city council person, that I'm going to go in and fight like I always do to make sure that the infill does not happen. I do think we have a solution for the trash trucks. So we don't have to create a bridge over there at 92nd Street where people are looking out their window and seeing trash trucks coming in and out. So I think if we're going underground and we're taking the trash out there, that way we've created more space and land and left alone. And I think as far as buildings are concerned, the three schools, it's just another, it's just another flub that the city council did. I saved PS 109 in 1999. And had the city council not voted to give it away to $1 to some organization without even putting it through the public system, you would have had 1,200 seats back into the public school system today. But because they didn't do that, we are now having to tear up more ground to build new schools.
Sorry.
That's okay. You're next.
Question?
Yes, hi. My name is Judith Clyne.
Hold me tight.
My name is Judith Clyne, middle of the street. First, I want to say there's a very interesting book called Reinventing Fire by Amory Glutton at the Rocky Mountain Institute. It talks about energy giving all the different things that you might want to check that out if you don't know it yet. My question is, talking about the, what with the green, whatever, where you have the garbage.
Oh, okay. You should be, like, one, one 90 seconds?
Yes, like you were just talking, yes, the transfer, the transfer station. Why is there no, is there a program for recycling, for composting, for, it should be part, that should be part of the thing? Because then you wouldn't have to worry about trashing and putting it on barges to send it around the world and come back and stuff like that.
I completely agree with you. I absolutely agree with you. And I think that, that what we could do with this UVAC system is we could create, you know, three structures within this structure. One of them would be for doing the garbage, the other one would be doing the recycled materials and actually the trash after that. But I definitely would like to do a lot more in the way of with recycling. We're in an emergency right now. We can't keep going down this road anymore. We have to change now. The time is here and epic, epic that we were waiting for, we're now in it, okay? So I want to go full throttle with that. And I will tell you, I've been to other places. You know, the best thing Atlantic City has are those five windmills when you come in. And I met the guy who put them up. And those five windmills create enough electricity to power the whole desalination plant. Atlantic City only uses desalinated water. So they, those five windmills do that whole plant and then they sell it back to the city for a quarter of the price of the electricity. So that's only five windmills. So I often thought it would be great on both sides of the rivers to be doing windmills on that, on these sides. And now that the price of solar has come down so drastically, there is no reason why there shouldn't, we have glass on every building, we should have solar on every building. We're going to have glass, you might as well make it solar glass.
Thanks for your question, Judith, about recycling. I don't know if you, you know, you go around the neighborhood and you see these cans with multiple slots, you know what I'm talking, does everybody know what I'm talking about? Where you have paper, you have cans, you have, and your regular trash. Well, right, right. Composting is not one of them. I think we should move into that direction, absolutely. I've just started composting, thanks to a local person, Jacqueline Ottman, who does sort of a lot of waste stuff. And she's, she's sold me on composting. I love it. I bring it over to the 92nd Street Green Market. But speaking of that, you know those multiple bin trash cans? Well, we just got a bunch of new trash cans. How many holes do those big green trash cans have? They have one. They were put there and they were paid for by our tax dollars locally and put there unfortunately by our current city council member, who also says he stands in the way of the 91st Street Transfer Station. I don't really think you can hold both positions. If you want to eliminate waste, you have to be instructing the public about different ways of moving their waste around. But if you have what they call single stream trash cans, you know, everywhere, I don't think that you're, I don't think that you're moving in the right direction. I think we need to be instructing the public first on recycling and then later on about composting all of our organic waste, which apparently we only use 1% of that, right? Only 1% of waste is composted.
Thank you very much. Okay. Patrick just reminded me, this actually is supposed to be a candidate forum on small business. So whatever your questions are, it's fine. But if you have a question oriented toward business, that would also be cool. So anyway, this lady here has the next question, but please do say your name. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leora. Just a quick comment, you can call it an apartment sanitation, ask for a composting thing for your building, if that's what you want to do. But my question is not about small businesses, although that's an important issue. I want to hear what the candidates think about adjustment pricing, whether you support the governor's plan or the mayor's plan, is, I think something needs to happen and I think you're not familiar with the plan. One plan is about adding tolls onto the bridge bridges. And the second plan is about taxing the sort of uber rich, I think it ends up being like 4,000 New Yorkers at some level. So it would be good to hear it both.
You want to go first?
Yes. I'm sorry, I want to go first because it really pisses me off. Sorry about my mouth. I do not want to put tolls on the bridges. I do not want to do that. I am okay with taxing the uber rich. I'm really fine with that. But I think that the tolls have already gotten so expensive here that we can't afford them anyway. We can't keep carrying the rich. We continue to carry the 1%. We are carrying them and that is why we have a problem. And all of these things are bleeding into the next thing. So it's, we're going to carry the tolls and then, you know, you're going to put up all these high rises, which by the way, none of us can live in because they're not rent stabilized or rent controlled. We're losing our small businesses because when you tear down a rent stabilized business, you also tear down those businesses at apartments above. So I definitely am not for adding any more taxes to the bridges.
I likewise am for taxing the super rich. I think they can handle it. I don't think, sadly for them, they're not in this room right now, they can't hear that. But I don't think they'll even notice. And to be honest with you, I think it's a little, I'm a little touchy on the mayor bringing up the millionaire's tax now during election year rather than years ago when I think he should have brought it up. As far as taxing the tolls, I think as of now, that's going to cause a lot of problems for working class people who need to travel cross borough for jobs, if they're teachers, if they work in public services. You know, they're not the people who should be hit with this. There's the idea of the reduced price MetroCard. And if we can come up with some sort of reduced price or resident price system, then we can start talking about that and having the commercial vehicles that come from other states or the people that are here vacationing, maybe bringing up this idea then. But until we have something that protects the working class New Yorkers who depend on our bridges and who are already struggling with affordability, we can't be raising, raising their tolls.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
I'll make it brief because I unfortunately don't have one question. I have a couple. One, is there anything we can do with the rats? I get home from work at 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning and like five rats crossing the street trying to grab out of me. It's a major hell hazard. We know that, it spreads disease. Two, about clean energy, the county is providing some alternatives now, but I can't afford them. I can't afford my ability to go out. So I'm wondering if there's something we might be able to subsidize it, you know, like some kind of gift to those who decide to do clean energy, you know, I don't know, to make it more of a clean city. The third one has to do with the issue of the high rises. There's not only the issue, as you said, safety and infrastructure and skyline and making everything ugly. But there's another thing, which is, I understand that, you know, a lot of these apartment buildings are starting like 2 million a pop. And it's not Americans that are living there. And many people pop in, they live there a month a year. These are largely vacant. So I was talking to some real estate guy to say, "How is this happening?" And I don't really understand this, but maybe you do. There's some kind of tax incentive, state law tax incentive. We're not building affordable housing, we're building any housing at all. And you get some major write-offs. So money's running the show and it's, it's really destroying the city. And I wonder if you have any ideas about how we could reverse that?
Thank you. What's your name?
Jean-Maire Manowski.
Jean-Maire?
Jean-Maire Manowski, yeah.
Jean-Maire, thank you for the question. So I'll tackle rats and I'll tackle the towers, because I don't know if I'll tackle three. So the rats goes back to the issue of composting our organic waste. If we take our organic waste out of our trash, no more rat food. They can't eat plastic, they can't eat paper, they can't eat tin cans. So we need to be pushing for a program of instructing the public, we can, we can work this into schools. I remember as a kid, I did a recycling program in some science project in school, Recycler for Life. I think that, you know, moving forward on something like that in our schools and instructing the public and getting people to get those bins, getting those bins in our district is what we need. Because rats can crawl into those bins. You know, they work, in other parts of the city, I think there are probably some other reasons we won't get into why they're not in our, in our district yet. As far as the towers going up everywhere and other people owning them that don't live here, I want to create a vacancy tax. A vacancy tax both for commercial, which hopefully will get to small business, but also for residential. Because people are buying these places and these big luxury towers, right? Because they know that it's one of the best real estate investments you can do is buy Manhattan Real Estate. And I'm going to wrap it up here. But what I would say is we start taxing them and taxing these luxury developers and infrastructure tax. And like I said before, create a zoning change where we have floor-to-floor height limits so that for the next 10 years or so, we have a moratorium on these luxury buildings because New Yorkers can't afford to live there.
Thank you. I just do want to also, I hate to point this out, but they actually can't eat metal and they do eat paper. Rats eat everything. I know that, I, yes, you can look it up. They eat everything. They can eat anything and get through it. But I'm going to go over to the housing question and the question of the towers. I want to put a moratorium on knocking down rent stabilized buildings. I want to end right now knocking down any rent stabilized buildings. And when we are building anew, the new buildings, I would like, there is, there is an equation they use in the city council now, it's called 2080. So 20% goes to so-called affordable housing and 80% goes to the ultra-rich. Well, that doesn't make any sense. So we're going to flip that. And we're going to do 80% housing for lower income and middle income people. And maybe if they're good, if they're really good, they'll get the top 20%. We have an emergency here. Under Mayor Bloomberg, 55,000 people went homeless, okay? And now you have these towers, you are absolutely right, that are sitting empty with people using those piñatas. They come in once in a while and in the meantime, we don't have a place for the people, the residents of New York City, the average everyday Joe, who's making $45,000 a year to live. So this is one of the ways I'm going to create affordable housing. And when I say affordable housing, I am not talking about housing that is $1,500 a month. We're talking $700 or $800, okay?
Sorry. I've heard you say this before and I agree with you on so many tenants of it. You know, I think obviously we do need leaders who get into city council and who stand up and demand more affordable housing. But 80/20, as you and I both know, is a state regulation and we can't just say we're going to flip it and have it flipped over tomorrow. We need to be in there fighting. But I really want to know what you will do, because I've heard you say this, it sounds great, but what will you do to flip 2080 to 80?
30 seconds.
Okay. So in 30 seconds, I don't think there's a lot I can say except for, I will tell you one thing. Patrick, I am not, obviously, this is my third time running, so obviously I don't give up very easily. You know, I was born in the year of the ox, so we don't give up. And I do want to tell you something, I have approached projects that I should never have won. The reason why they call the school construction authority an authority is because they don't have to abide by any local laws. And yet, I was able to stop a demolition in progress and force them to put the roof back on the building at the cost of $5 million. So if you approach something, like you're never going to win, and you don't think you can talk to the state, if you, you get nothing if you ask for nothing. And sometimes it's the way you ask and not what you're asking. And I don't think we have that right now with our local representatives.
Okay, thank you. Next question, right?
Hi, I'm Mason. Hi, Mason, and actually, you'll get to talk about it more, because I wanted to ask about the homelessness crisis, and what are your policy solutions?
So, thanks for the question, Mason. As far as the homelessness crisis goes, it comes in, uh, a lot of different colors, we'll say. There's the senior homelessness crisis, and I think that needs to come, the response to that is, is rent freezes and, um, rent stabilization and rent control for people over a certain age. That's what we have to do, people are already on fixed incomes, and we need to solve that. I think we have an LGBT youth homelessness crisis in our city, where, uh, I think, something like 40% of youth homeless, uh, under the age of 30, identify as LGBTQ+. I, this to me is, is a crisis issue. It says that people are, are, are leaving wherever they are, because they're in such a situation where possible homelessness in New York is a better future for them than wherever they are right now. And so we need to be approaching the issue, uh, from a human rights standpoint. And I think the third thing I'd like to say is, is we have people in our own communities who are struggling, and I think we have this not-in-my-backyard way of thinking. We need to be creating community shelters for people and telling people that, you know, we understand that we don't want to uproot them completely. They're at the will of, of, you know, landlords who are taking advantage of them, but as a community, if we want to be a sanctuary city, we need to show, uh, we need to show respect for them and show them that the community cares.
Same question? Okay, so, I, I see it differently. Most of the people that are currently homeless in New York right now are homeless from the Bloomberg administration, where we changed many of the laws, and we also allowed many of the rent-stabilized buildings to be taken out of rent stabilization. So people just didn't come here, they were homeless. And most of the people, many of the people that are homeless are working people that have jobs to go to, and they can't afford to pay the rents. So, one of the things that I plan to do is to reintroduce rent stabilization to every building I can, period. I'm sorry, we are in a crisis, we cannot keep going down this street, we've been doing this for years, and we're going the same direction and not getting anything. So, we're talking about rent stabilization, so we can stabilize people and keep them in their homes. The next thing I want to do is to make sure we stop these mass evictions. If, if, if somebody comes to court and they're still in their house, and we're going to have to do something before they hit the street, because this is the, this is the only time you're really going to be able to stop this problem. And I'm not for building more homeless shelters. I have seven homeless shelters across the street from me, and they don't work. We need to build permanent housing. And if we're building anything on the land of the New York City housing projects, it must be more low-income housing. That's it. It cannot be luxury high-rises. We have plenty of them.
Could, could Ms. Goodwin, Richard Brody, could Ms. Goodwin and Mr. Boblin indicate their level of activity with the local community board, what committees they might have served on, and what they have been able to accomplish?
I've been here a long time, and I've interacted with my community board for many, many, many years. I have not sat on the community board, because unfortunately, the woman who is the speaker, Melissa Marcaverito, has not allowed me to be on the city council, which is really a shame, because I mean, I've been on the community board, because the community board is someplace where somebody like me can really do a lot. But, uh, my personal feeling with our community board, uh, the one that had been in my district, was, the community board doesn't have teeth to get things done, so they really need to be able, in other words, when the community board says, hey, you know, Costco, Home Depot, you're too big for our neighborhood, we, you know, we, they have to have a say, but they have to have a say that's meaningful. So I think when it comes to the community boards, we have to give them, uh, the right to help us draw up policies and, and give them some, some level of, you know, jurisdiction, so it means something more than just hot air when they're talking about it.
So, um, I have had some great meetings with community board members, and I've applied to be on the community board a couple of times, but I've yet to be, have the, you know, honor of being chosen, uh, to work on the community board. But one of the most important committees that we have is the land use and the preservation committees, because I think a lot of things happen there that affect, uh, us for years to come. And, um, you know, I also think the, the community board, it has merely an advisory role, and it needs to be able to have some independence. And as of now, it depends on funding from the borough president and from the city council member. And so if they get their own independent funding, they can begin to question the authorities above them. They can have a difference of opinion, and they can say the community thinks this, uh, but otherwise, they have to work in lockstep with the borough president and with the council member in order to maintain funding. So what we need are independent funding and, 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 you know, also term limits, because people serve on the community board for, for life.
Where could that funding come from?
I think it can come from the discretionary budgets from both offices. I think it can, uh, we can, we can look at what is usually given to the community boards, and we can, we can make that sort of a, a bottom line, and we can have them apply for funding if they need, because they need to have certain advisors. They need to have, uh, planners, they need to have, uh, different assessors to go out and to look at, you know, prospective projects to see if they're feasible for the community.
Thank you. This gentleman next, then I have this gentleman here. Uh, there was somebody, and there are a couple of people back there, I'm not quite sure who they were. Is anybody else over here? This lady here, this lady here, okay. There goes, and you?
Small business questions, any small business questions?
Yes, that's what I've been waiting to hear also. You know, you walk up and down the blocks, and, um, you see so many stores that are just shuttered, block after block after block. And I know, like, Roosevelt Island is part of this district, and people that live there told me that, that they have store space, huge amounts of it, that has stood vacant for decade after decade after decade, and nothing has been done by any of the people that supposedly you're in a position to, uh, encourage different conditions. So, I'd like to know what the positions of the candidates are on how to save the epidemic of, that is affecting and destroying all of our small businesses, and that's all related also to housing and homelessness and community, because a lot of communities have centered organically around those small businesses, and it's being pushed out by a corporate invasion. And, uh, and, and the rents, store owners tell me that, I, I just, uh, I live on the Bowery side, actually, so, but, one store owner that I knew very well for 20 years just went out of business. Why? Because he couldn't pay the rent, there were no profits left to the owner after the rent. So I'd like to know, uh, how much you mean by that?
What's your name?
My name is Joe Myers.
Joe, Joe, thank you for the question. This is, uh, this is a big issue. I want to give you two, a two-word answer, and then I'll elaborate. Tax breaks. Uh, when, when an owner leaves his store vacant, he gets to write off that high rent that he sets, which no one can afford, uh, as, as a tax write-off. So we need to end that, you know, that loophole. Uh, the second thing, you know, we've got block after block of our local businesses here, and they are, you know, they're, they're important to us, they're the lifeblood of the community. When you put a dollar into a local business, 60 cents comes back into the community. When you put a dollar into a chain, 40 cents comes back to the community. So those are very meaningful, uh, meaningful to us for a lot of reasons. So we need to maintain our small businesses, and I have a three-point plan. One is, we have a, uh, a rent control program for, uh, for small businesses. Second, we have a public defender system, because so many of these businesses go out of business because they've got small fees here and there. In this bar, Ryan's daughter, uh, Miki, the owner, had to pay $15,000 just to keep a flagpole that had been on this building 30 years before he owned the building. And the third thing is a progressive tax system. Just like we give a progressive tax to low-income individuals, we need to treat our small businesses that way, and say, we care, you're part of our community, we want you here, and we want to protect you.
Yes, I agree, it's truly astounding. I have been endorsed by the Small Business Congress, and I'm really proud of that, and there are a couple of plans, as Patrick mentioned, I did talk about it on the debate, was the first line of business would be rent control. However, there is already a bill that's out there that has to be pushed through the city council, and this is another way of approaching this problem. And that is that we have the, the, the tenant would be like the rent-stabilized tenant. In other words, the tenant is the only one who's allowed to break the lease. So when the landlord comes back and says, you know, I got somebody else who can pay more rent, and you've got to go, he can't do that anymore. Only you, the renter, can say, I wish to break the lease. Now, when it comes time to negotiate the, the new rent, and that's the key word, negotiate, the landlord will now be, will have to sit down with you by law to negotiate the new rent. And if you cannot get to a new rent, then you're going to have to go into arbitration, and that arbitration will be binding, and it has to be okay with both of you. You, he can't walk out and be happy, and you can't be, walk out and just be happy. We have to get someplace in the middle. Uh, the next thing, and the other thing that the gentleman was asking about Roosevelt Island, and not many of you are from Roosevelt Island, if I know of, but Roosevelt Island does have a unique situation. They have had storefronts empty for 40 years. And the reason why they're empty is because they have a manager who manages the properties for Rioc, instead of the money going directly into Rioc. And, and what we'd like to see is, all of the money that is generated by the store's profits, each store will pay the same flat rate of percentage into Rioc, so that they're not paying $45 a square feet, because they don't have a business area like we have in Manhattan. They can't pay $45, and that's why their butcher's closed, and that's why their candy store and their ice cream shop, they've all closed, and they've been closed for years. So that's some of my plan.
Hi, my name is Jerry. My question's also business-related. So a couple of years ago, there was a, uh, there was a big scandal where, uh, a, a large contractor had been hired to build a website, or actually improve a website for New York City, and it turned out that they were like taking bribes, and they cost the city half a billion dollars, and it was great, like people went to jail. Um, and, uh, I guess my question is sort of in two parts. Uh, number one, it seems to me that there's like kind of this epidemic, uh, to some extent in the state and the city of like, you know, big contractors, connected contractors getting, uh, getting these deals, not really delivering on what they promised, and, uh, you know, costing the city and the state, but, you know, we're talking about the city, uh, in excess of like tens of millions of dollars beyond, you know, what we're projected to pay them. Uh, and so my question is like, number one, you know, how would you increase the transparency of this process? And number two, uh, is there something that you might do that would make it easier for smaller, uh, businesses to compete against like these large, well-connected contractors that get these bids?
I, I, one of the things I did, I neglected to say this, uh, I want to put a limit on how many box stores are allowed to be built in one neighborhood. For example, banks, we have banks all over the place, and we keep losing our small stores to put these banks in, or another Rite Aid, or another CBS. So I think we need to limit how many of them are coming in, and we need to bring back in more mom-and-pop businesses, because that is really the lifeblood of New York City. People don't travel from outside of our state to come and see our CBS. They're coming here, they're coming here to see our fabulous restaurants and our great little stores and how, you know, inju- injuinous we are. Uh, that's a new word I just created. Um, as far as the transparency is concerned, I agree with you, and I think that maybe what we could be able to do is, um, make any paperwork available through Freedom of Information to, to anybody that wants to see it. And that way, uh, like, if, you know, I'm looking at all your papers, it's going to be a lot harder for you to, you know, pull a fast one on us, especially anyone who is doing business with this city. You are 100% right, they should go to jail, and I think that the only way that we're going to know what they're doing is to make it legal that they have to provide those documents through the Freedom of Information Act.
So, um, this is an important issue to me, because I've been, uh, fighting with the IBEW, Local 3, Independent Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, uh, Local 3. They're the people who, uh, are the union for pretty much like most of the cable companies, and specifically, they've been working with Time Warner and now Spectrum, which is the result of the merger. They've been working without a contract for about two years, and for the last five months, they've been on strike. The reason they've been on strike is because Spectrum has a franchise, what they call a franchise agreement, which is what happens when you, uh, do business with the city, that you sign a franchise agreement, and in the franchise agreement, it says you must negotiate all union issues. It doesn't say that there are any penalties if you don't. And so therefore, Spectrum is taking the law to the limit and not negotiating with the union, because there's no penalties. The only person who can pull the rug out from under those, the franchise agreement is the mayor. So what we need is independent oversight. I think across the board, there are so many appointments that the mayor gets to make for the Department of Education, for, uh, the, the, the Department of, you know, uh, sorry, Waste Management, things like that. I think these need to be elected, and I think we need independent oversight, especially when we're talking about private corporations doing business with the city and basically using our money the way we don't want them to use.
Sure, hi, my name's Lisa Paul, and, um, this is for both candidates. So, um, the Chapeau School is a private, sorry, oh, sorry. The Chapeau School is a private school for girls at 84th Street and East End Avenue, and the Chapeau School, um, is in the middle of a very intrusive and disruptive expansion to add on three stories and a rooftop play deck that was begun in 2015 as a result of their victory at the Board of Standards and Appeals for four zoning variances. So, related to that, um, I'd like to know, please, um, what your take is on the Board of Standards and Appeals, because you've talked about a lot of, uh, great ideas to do things differently, uh, in, for the city, but there are agencies that exist that are, um, at work, and so I'm very curious how you would, if, if you would envision it, reining in the Board of Standards and Appeals to prevent zoning variances such as what Chapeau achieved. And secondly, I'm curious what you, uh, what your awareness is of the Chapeau expansion, and what you think of, of that vis-à-vis the community, and it's affecting the quality of life.
I love it.
Thank you, thank you, Lisa. I, uh, actually am aware of the, the Chapeau School you're talking about at the corner of East End and 84th. Uh, I used to live around the corner on York and 84th, and now I live over on 81st East End, but like, I know this very well, I walk my dog past it every day, and it's, it seems to be one of the slowest-moving construction projects I've ever seen in my life. And when you're talking about the Board of Standards and Appeals, and we're talking about, let's, let's, you know, bring that out to, if I may, land, the land use committees, the historic preservation committees, you don't have people on there who have a lot of, who, who are being overseen by the community. There's no elected board to look over these, uh, over all these committees and these other boards. And so what I think we need is to make sure that we have that kind of oversight, that, you know, there's, there's watchers to watch the watchers, because clearly, whatever we're doing now isn't functioning. There, there's a lot of money at stake, and, and there's a lot of zoning changes that people are allowed to give, and what we need is to put limits on how much zoning we can change, because when we, when we set zoning standards and set zoning laws, but we allow anybody to change it if they have enough money, what are we doing with selling out the people who have the smallest voice and giving over to the people who have the loudest, the, the biggest bags of cash?
And so, I, I, I also just want to tag on here and say that, you know, one of the most important issues to me is zoning. This is exactly why I ran, I run for city council, because the zoning issues, people, it's not a sexy issue, but people don't understand how these zoning issues come home and live in your living room with you. I mean, I have been through the, up, up through the, uh, the zoning in my old district where they put the Costco, which was going to be a Home Depot and Costco, and they used eminent domain to remove 11 small businesses and bash them down in order to create that gigantic parking lot, which is now going to be three 50-story buildings. That's what we knew was going to happen sooner or later. These things happen because of zoning. So I really think that the most important, one of the most important issues to me is going to be the zoning issues, particularly the upzones throughout New York City. The mayor has five upzones right now, and we're all being hit by them. We're being hit with 50-story buildings, or we're tearing down everything in sight. It seems to me that every time you turn around, there's another historic building going down. And I would really, really like to see, I am preservation girl, so I am for historic preservation, and I would really like to see our landmark committee really has some teeth. They really don't have any teeth, and just once in a while, they get something through, and even after you landmark a building, it still doesn't feel protected. So I think that these, these organizations need a lot more, uh, oomph.
Can I, can I just add one thing? 30 seconds?
We have two more questions, and I want to ask you guys, just, just curious, how long is this supposed to last?
Uh, we can, we can cut it off at an hour, or whatever.
We have to wait five, five times.
So we started at 8:15, we'll end at 9:15.
I'll take two or three more questions, yeah. Can I, can I just say, um, uh, can I just, can I say 30 seconds?
Better to get a real warning.
Can I, can I get 30 seconds, and thanks? Uh, so, one issue that I, I heard a, uh, a housing lawyer bring up, a zoning lawyer So one issue that I, I heard a, a housing lawyer bring up, a zoning lawyer bring up, was the idea that when we're talking historic preservation, we're talking land use committees, those, those presentations we're getting from developers are not under oath. And what I propose is that we start putting those under oath so that we have real prosecut- prosecutorial power when we're coming after them, and they're not doing what they're saying. They're taking five years when they said they were gonna take two years.
We're excepted.
And we can, we can, we can take care of them.
Okay. We have about 30 seconds to add?
Not on time.
Okay, alright, good, okay.
Just for that 30 seconds, I have to add one thing else. The homeless thing around, which is a huge problem, I just wanted to correct record, it's a mental health issue. All of the mental health facilities are closed. It's not that, it's, it's one thing to say that people are getting addicted to their homeless, but, you know, you guys know who Willie is, right?
Yeah.
You see him in the street, he goes back. Willie's lucid when he gets his meds, but he is no longer in an image facility.
Correct.
That's how you fix it. You can't fix it by, you know, putting them in housing. Fix it by helping them first.
I think it's multifaceted. Uh, I have, I have to say that it's multi, well, it's not.
I just wanna make sure, because you guys are both playing on different things.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I think we need-
I have a small business question.
Absolutely.
Small business question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, I was just telling you, that's what he forces. So anyway, um, because we're talking about small business, right over here, a block away, uh, we've had, from, from the chemist in order to passware received this debate. That's where small business is. What, I, I actually don't know what's happened there. What, I mean, number one, nobody really seemed to object at first because there was a happy house, that's right. And so it didn't get as much notice because, you know, there was, from like, there'd be some cons and you'd see police cars, but there wasn't a big outrage when that closed. Now, yeah. So what was the original plan there, and is there a plan moving forward? If not, could they open businesses there again?
Do you wanna go first? Sorry. Okay. So you're talking about the block here between 85th and 86th?
Well, that I can see from here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so yeah, we've got one small business left, and they're probably gonna be fighting, yeah, they're gonna be fighting their, um, they're gonna be fighting their landlords for probably as long as they wanna be open because what's probably being done is they're leaving those vacant and they're collecting, as I said before, this, we have this higher rent blight issue. They raise the rent up to an exorbitant amount, hoping to hook a chain. If they don't hook a chain, they get to write that out up as a tax write-off. We need to end that, and we need to get the community involved, and we need to get our elected officials involved to make sure that we can, we can protect our small businesses out of there.
There was a project in place at one time.
There was, yeah.
What, what, my question is, what was that and what happened?
I don't know the, the state of that current project. I, I think it stalled out. I, I haven't, I've been to, I've been to the community board when they're talking about it, and there's an idea that they're gonna wait even longer to make that an even bigger project, take over that Mercedes, take over that, you know?
Freedom of information.
No, I got, I got a really big question.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. Wait, you turn, a few other people, I'll get to you.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say too that I really feel bad about what's happening over there, and I, I don't think we should, I think what they wanna do is tear the whole thing down, and that would be really a shame because I really think that it's a shame that the Mercedes is sitting empty, and I think, I don't know, the, the stores and the apartment building is completely empty on the corner.
I got your olives and air ducts right there.
Yeah, it's really, it's really heartbreaking. So, you know, this is one of those places I'm talking about, not to tear, that's a rent-stabilized building which has, which, it openly give, what?
But nobody's delivering.
That's right, but they, because they, they, they took all the people out because they wanna sell the, the land, and they will, and they're gonna turn it into a huge high-rise, so it's another huge gigantic loss of small business and rent-stabilized apartments. We need to do everything we can to keep whatever rent-stabilized apartments are here in the program. You cannot tear any more of them down. We have lost over a million, and it's time we put a moratorium on tearing down rent-stabilized buildings.
And to get rid of the incentive.
Get rid of that incentive.
I think, I just want, I don't think there's an approved project as of now.
But it doesn't matter, they can still sit.
Well, he wanted to know.
Next question.
Hi, my name is Sarah Chu, and I'm a member of Community Boardy, and I co-chair the Small Business Committee, and I'm speaking on my own behalf, I'm only sharing that as a matter of identification. So, small business question. Mick Malamthe, the owner of this bar, spoke at a recent meeting a few months ago, where he and a number of local restaurant bar owners talked about challenges that they've been having with the regulatory framework for restaurants and bars. My first question is, what do you think the greatest challenges are, and what can you do to fix them? My second question is, I'm a parent, I, the Upper East Side is teeming with young families. What do you think are the primary issues of parents, and what are you planning on doing to help them?
As far as the restaurants are concerned, I keep hearing the same thing about restaurants, is that you have, you'll have inspectors come in, and it turns out it's a matter of opinion. So one inspector can let that go by, where another inspector will call that a violation. So I think it's really important that we streamline that, and we have, something is a lot more scientific than just eyeballing something and saying, in my opinion, this is a violation, because people are getting violated one day or something, or the next day, somebody else does not call that a violation. And I think it's really hard on the small businesses. The second thing with small businesses that I would like to see possible is, I don't really think they should have to pay their landlords taxes, their property taxes. I know that's been happening for years, I know that's all rolled into the lease when you get it, but it doesn't really, it seems to me that if you're paying rent, your, the taxes should be a part of that rent. You shouldn't be paying rent for the store and then separately $15,000 a month for the property taxes. So I don't know if we can do anything about it, but I think we could put it out there and see if we can do better with the, with the taxes, the property taxes.
So, Sarah, right, I've seen you at the meetings before. So I wanna start with the, with the young parents issue. Two things, we've got the pre-K seats, we don't have enough pre-K seats, we need to be in there, we need to be fighting for more. The other thing I would say is we've got the lead in the schools issue, and now we've got our town writing about it, now we've got New York Times writing about it, we've got WNYC reporting that there are lead pipes in our schools and the drinking water supply. And so we need to be taking this seriously. I've spoken with the current city council member, he knows it's an issue, he told me there's not a public outcry, and so it's not a crisis yet. We need to be done with those kind of politics. When we see a problem, we need people who will jump in there and solve it. So, secondly, I wanna move on to the first question. What was the first question again?
It was about small businesses.
Small businesses, right, sorry. Small businesses, thanks, Sarah. I, I was at that meeting where Mick spoke, and that's where I came up with this idea about creating a public defender system for our small businesses, because they have inspectors come in during their busiest times, they have people come by and say, hey, you haven't registered the flagpole that's out here, and they have no one to speak on their behalf. As low-income and middle-income individuals, we have access to a public defender system. I think if we're gonna protect our small businesses the same way as we would protect lower, middle-income individuals, we need to create a public defender system for them as well.
Great. We're, we're getting down to the last two questions.
Gentlemen and kinfolk that have gathered at Ryan's daughter on the second floor and our living room, the Victorian living room that we are so graced by our land of America, the home of the free and the brave. We have many votes, and this vote is so important, it's so important. And my parents, they are bold politicians. I didn't know, and I still couldn't substantiate how they stood up their rights. But I'm asking every single person that is standing in Ryan's room on the second floor for this to be, because Mickey became a citizen. Can we all give a shout out? Mickey, I'm not done. I'll be very quick.
Thank you.
All I ask is that, could you please explain to every single person, which is quite a crowd, why we vote, and what your vote means as a sentiment? Because I understand constitutionally, federally, what it means, but I never guess what happens in opening.
Okay, great, well, this is city council. Go ahead.
So, just to address that really quickly, yeah, we are running for city council. The analogy I would make, and I make shorthand, is that we are the senate, we, we create legislation, we pass it along to the president slash mayor, he thinks he's president already, and we, and we pass it along for his approval, and we get together and we create a consensus. I think the votes in this community really matter, especially now more than ever. We wanna be telling our, our underprivileged and our minority communities that we are a sanctuary city, and we wanna create legislation to protect people, people like Mickey, who worked hard to become a citizen, and the first thing he told me he did was register to vote, and that's amazing, he understands the power of American democracy, understands what we have in front of us. And I think, standing in a really strange and historic time where we don't know what tomorrow will bring from Washington, we need to be creating the city that we wanna see. And we need to be reminding each other also that it is possible, the future that we want is possible. What we, what's in our hearts is possible, and the people who are in office right now wanna dissipate that feeling of possibility, that we can, we can demand, you know, we protect lower and middle-income people, that we can demand that we protect all minorities and underprivileged communities. We can do it, and I think the city council plays a role in creating the legislation that protects people.
And I would agree, but I would also go further. First, I wanna say that we're, we're living in Trump time right now. So if, if it's not as, as clear as a heart attack to you, how it makes a difference in your life, then, then you're not paying attention. So I always, every day when I'm out there giving out my flyers, I hear people tell me that they're not gonna vote. They're not gonna vote, they don't care, it's a, you know, a middle thumb, or a middle finger up to the government because, you know, these are bad times. In these times, these are the most important times to vote. This is when it really matters. These policies, a long time ago, I didn't vote, my mother told me, you know what, these things that happened will be happening in your house soon. And I remember that Mario Cuomo was the governor at that time, and I was in housing court. And, you know, it was, it was not comfortable, but I was winning, and it was a fair place to be, and then the next thing you know, Pataki got in, and all the judges changed. And so the case that I was winning, I instantly lost, and I lost everything, and I almost became homeless. And that's when I really got what my mother, a Roosevelt Democrat, meant. These people matter in your lives, and this is as serious as a heart attack, and you need to come out, and you need to participate in the system. If you don't like the system, don't stop being in the system, get your tail out there and get to work. When I become the city council person, a lot of people down there are not gonna like me, they're not gonna like my progressive policies. So guess what? Just like President Roosevelt came back to his constituents, I'm coming to you, and I'm gonna need you to stand behind me and stand up for the things that we need in our community. Thank you.
Last question, I guess.
Alright, so if I'm last question, uh, I mean, I have two questions, so.
Well, you got a whole bunch of people hacking, I'd like to ask something.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, uh, first question, I've read a little bit about the ferry on 90th Street that's gonna be new, I'm just wondering what you think about, what are the opportunities for that, and, um, do you think it's actually gonna take away subway ridership, or do you think it's just gonna be kind of like a tourism thing? And then the second question is, this has been great, like, this is my first time ever doing a, a community politics event, coming to something like this. What's your plan if elected to continue community engagement and keep people coming to the city?
God bless Mickey.
Um, as far as the furries are concerned, uh, the, the ferry so far, to me, still has a lot of kinks to be, uh, taken out, because right now, the ferry's not transferable. So you're buying a fare for the ferry, say, if you're coming from Roosevelt Island, you have to pay $70 for an unlimited fare, and then you gotta come over here, and you've gotta buy another unlimited card, which means you're spending over $200 a month. And these ferries only take 150 people at a time, and there's only seven of them coming on board. So the original idea was to alleviate the overcrowding, particularly on Roosevelt Island, but instead, it's really sticking it to the customer again. So I really think that we did not get a good deal under Ben, we need to renegotiate this, we need to back to the governor, and we need to ask him to, to renegotiate with us a deal that works for all the people, so this thing works a lot more smoothly. I personally love the idea of a ferry, but I don't really think that what we're getting right now is going to be effective for the people that are gonna be riding. As a matter of fact, if I lived on Roosevelt Island and was given that choice, I would not buy a ferry pass, I would just take the subway or jam myself on, and I would just keep riding the subway. What was the second question?
Uh, community engagement.
Well, community engagement, I think, you know, there's, usually when you get in office, they expect you to go to community boards, but this is better. So I say we just keep coming back to bars and doing it over and over again.
So, um, I'll start with the ferry service as well. I think we need to, you need to be able to get on the ferry, and you need to be able to use your MetroCard. It needs to be a MetroCard swipe to get on the ferry, absolutely, one city, one fare. What I would say now is we've got a proposed stop at 90th Street, and if you look at where that stop is, that doesn't give you direct access to anything but lovely, Carl Scherz Park, but it doesn't give you access to the MTA system, it doesn't give you access to the trains. So that's why we need to reconsider the, the site of the, or the Marie Transfer Station as a ferry stop, because then buses can come up that ramp, and people with disabilities, seniors, and anyone, you know, who takes that ferry can get right into the MTA system. They could be taking a bus from there, and they're suddenly in the system. I would also say we need expanded bus service. Under our current city council member, we've seen bus cuts on the M31 and the M57. We need to expand bus service, and we need to make dedicated bus lanes during peak times, and we need, uh, green light priority during peak hours so that the bus goes first and the bus goes longer. We need an expansion of our, of our MTA to get people off the trains and make people safer again and not worried about taking the train. As far as community engagement goes, I would say we have town halls every month. I don't care where it is, if it's a bar, if it's a street corner, if it's a restaurant, I would want this because I love this idea. I talked about this with Mick originally, I said, go ahead and put it together, and I'm so happy with the turnout. Thank you so much for coming out.
And so's your living room.
Thank you for your living room, Mickey.
I wanna ask our, our candidates if they could indulge one more question on pre-K over here. Did you have a question too, Sarah? No, you look like you wanted to get out of here.
No.
Okay, no, no, no. Okay, so we have one more question on pre-K, you guys able to do that?
Let's do it.
Okay, so, it's yours.
There aren't enough seats for pre-K on Upper East Side, how will you fix that?
I like it short and sweet. Um, well, we need to be taking all this vacancy and all these vacant spaces we have, all these, these, uh, spaces that used to be schools, that used to be, uh, you know, daycare centers, we can take those and we can add pre-K seats. I think it just comes down to the wherewithal of the, the elected official to move in there and wanna solve this problem. The mayor gave us some, but in other, in some districts, they got more than they needed. But in our district, we didn't get enough. And so we need somebody in office who's gonna fight to make sure that we don't get enough, we're like the other districts that get more than we need, because you never know how things are change, are gonna change, you never know if we're gonna see more kids next year. We need to have an adequate amount, and that may involve taking some of these open spaces, these vacant storefronts, or these vacant, ex-daycare centers, and utilizing them at what they're meant to be, and, and, you know, providing for all, all kids, for all families at all income levels.
Well, I think, I, I agree that we need, we need more pre-K seats, and I think there are lots of places where we can find them as well. For example, where, where I live, at Lexington House Projects, we have a community room that's not used for anything anymore, it's just sitting empty. So I think we need to bring that back online, and we need to pay attention to, to people that are living in the projects. They're not getting as much of their fair share of, of many things. So I wanna make sure that they also can enjoy the system that the pre-K, uh, uh, system brings online. I, I agree also with using, uh, different spaces. It's been my hope and my dream that when I get into the city council, we're going to re-look at PS 109. I, PS 109 was always a school, it was never meant for children, I would have never stopped the demolition of a building if I knew it was gonna be, and turned into 35 spaces for yippie-yuppie artists, okay? I love artists, they're okay, but children have to come first, they don't have any advocates, we're the advocates. So we're supposed to be looking after them, and instead, we continue to look after ourselves. You know, I started out that project fighting the nasty grown-up syndrome. And that's once we stayed in the building, we tried to bring it back online as a public school, here we went again, and Bloomberg and Viverito turned it back into, turned it into this crazy project, an art space in East Harlem, where so many poor people live. That could have been 1,200 seats for the next 100 years for the New York City school system. So I think what we need to do is to take back that building, because it really does belong to us, it should have never been given away for $1 to anybody, it belongs to the children in New York City.
Can I respond, actually, 30 seconds?
So as a yippie-yuppie artist, actually, I grew up super poor, um, and I went to art school.
But you're a grown-up.
I'm a grown-up now, and, but, you know, I would say that we shouldn't be looking at a, an industry, or looking at people who work in an industry as our enemies. Ultimately, it's the real estate developers and the people who are buying these buildings, and the people who have the power who are the problem. and the people who have the power who are the problem. It's not the class, the chosen profession of artists or writers, or, these are not, these are all working-class people, all my, my artist and writer friends, you know, they're just above the poverty line.
Point of clarification, point of clarification. You know, I'm an artist too, so, but I'm a grown-up, and here's the difference, somebody who's six years old cannot advocate for themselves. So that's really nice that you're an artist, but you chose that, and you knew when you got in that there was a chance you could be poor. We do not take public schools and give them to grown-up people, and that's what I'm talking about. Let's get in front of these children and protect them. That's our responsibility. Sorry, that's our responsibility.
This has been a really, really great night. I'm so glad, and I found this a message. Okay, so we'll give, we'll give each of our candidates a minute, you were asking?
Yeah, just a minute.
A minute to wrap, and then you can all hang out and ask more questions, I'm sure they can't really get past you anyway. And it's, it's really great to find you all. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
So ladies first.
I've been teaching you in due job stage.
So I want to thank Mick, and I want to, and I want to celebrate the living room and tell you how much I enjoyed being here with all of the people that came out. You know, it's really amazing, because we could not get a debate at St. Lysick Center because Ben, your current city councilperson, would not attend. Because he would not attend, we were not allowed to have any debates. And it was a really hard find, to find a place where we could. We couldn't go to a church, because we didn't have all three, so it was really difficult, but I'm so glad that we made it here, because it's really important that people are involved. And frankly, I'm really, really astounded at the turnout, which means that you really do care, and I hope you really are angry enough to come out and make this vote. As I said, my name is, my name is Wenda Bang, and the reason why I'm running for city council is because I don't like the city council. I have lived here for 35, 35 years, I've been an activist, and if you look at the things I've done, I've accomplished much more than most of the city council has done, and I've not even been in the city council. And I think the experience that I own and I have, and my, my tenacity to not just drop out because I didn't make it the first time, this is the third time. My father, my husband died last year in my arms of a massive heart attack, but guess what? He puts my feet on the floor and pushes me out the door every day to keep fighting the good battle. So I think that we have some great people running, but I own more than one-year experience. I have lived here for 35 years, and I know the city backwards and forwards, and cannot wait to get out and do your shopping for you, your bidding.
Thank you.
So again, I want to also thank, thank you for hosting, thank you for timekeeping. The turnout's amazing, didn't know if anybody was going to show up, I'm really happy with this. What I want to say though is that we have to look at the Democratic Party as it stands now. We all have an understanding that in New York State, and especially in New York City, the Democrats rule.